All right, let's go ahead and call the meeting to order at 7:01 PM. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the I of the United States of America and to the republic only for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, just a reminder that Counselor Lee is remote. He is active out on duty right now, so. And for a while, right, Scott? Like a year?
Yeah, I'll be gone for a little over a year.
Yeah, because it's active duty that we do have allowances for that. Um, okay, so moving on. Is there a motion? There's a fly. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Mayor, so we had just an amendment to the agenda, which was the executive session.
Oh, that's right.
If you could repeat that.
So is there a motion to approve the amended agenda? That includes the executive session.
I move to approve the agenda as amended to add consideration of exempt information records. O R S 192.6602E as presented.
Second.
Uh, sorry, that's actually going to be F. I didn't fix it on that.
F.
F, not E.
I'll amend it to an F then.
Okay, and then Doug seconded it. Are you still going to second that, Doug?
Not now that it's an F. Yes, I do.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
I, the agenda is approved. Uh, moving on to presentations, proclamations, and visitors. Is this being presented now or after?
I have it now.
Yeah, okay, we do have one presentation tonight. We'll invite them to come up into the dais.
Is this on? Is it working? Awesome. Uh, hi, I'm Kim Dwyer with Saniam Service Integration. Thank you for having me and Christie, thank you for the invite. And I just came to give a brief overview about the program and answer any questions that you might have. And how many of you know about Saniam Service Integration? Very good, I'll take half. Uh, Saniam Service Integration is a program of Saniam Hospital and Clinics and a partnership with the local school district. So in our area from Turner to Idana, Sublimity to CIO and Jefferson now, we have five teams each cover that local school district area. So you do have folders in front of you. Um, there's a one pager about what service integration is. There's a couple of reports in there as well, and then I'll go over some of those numbers here briefly. Uh, but the idea with service integration is actually almost 30 years old. It started in Polk County. Um, and the idea was that they were seeing a duplication of services. They were seeing partners who weren't collaborating with one another, even within the own county. And so Polk County decided with some federal and state funding that they were going to start this initiative to increase, um, relationships within that area. And they felt that by building these relationships with, um, the school districts, with the first responders, with the local government, with state government, that you get increased collaboration and, um, just this willingness to work together if you knew who was sitting around the table working with you. Um, and so then Polk County still has that program going. In 2017, Saniam Hospital and Clinics decided, well, we want to do something out here. And they started with the Cascade team, the North Saniam team, and the Saniam Canyon team. Um, again, each one of those teams safety nets that school district catchment area, regardless of whether a household has children in that school district. It's just a geographic, uh, boundary that that team knows that that household living in that area is who they, who they can work with or serve. Um, each team has funds that are, um, that are, uh, donated or contributed by the hospital and that local school district. So specifically for Cascade, um, that team on July 1 starts with $8,000. Uh, 4,000 comes from the hospital and 4,000 comes from the school district. Those funds do not expire on June 30th. They roll over into the next year. And so far, I've been here since 2021 and we have not exhausted all of our funds. So those funds just continue to roll. And on Ju- or July 1, I just asked the hospital and the school district for whatever it takes to get back up to that $8,000 mark and divide it between the two of them. Um, those funds can be used for anything, uh, from rent and utilities to gas and grocery cards to funeral expenses, unfortunately. Um, just about anything we can look at a funding request for that is outside of any kind of court costs. So we don't assist with adoptions or divorces or custody, uh, anything with the courts. Um, but pretty much everything else we can look at assisting those households with. Um, it does go through a vetting process. Part of my job is to vet those requests that are coming in. Um, so around the table, you've got those community partners, again, the school districts, the first responders, the nonprofits, the churches. Just about anyone that wants to be a part of the service integration team can be. We have community members that just want to help their neighbors and they sit around the table. Um, and so those are the partners that are working with households directly that are, um, making sure that, uh, you know, does the household have Oregon Health Plan? Are they connected to the benefits that they might be eligible for? Um, and those partners are working with the other partners around the table, again, building those relationships, um, and making sure that they're not duplicating services for those households. Uh, so if a, if a request, um, has all exhausted resources, then they can look at doing that funding request and then I look at processing it with the team. Um, let's see, I'm trying to think. Uh, so if you look at your folders, there is a report for Cascade specifically in there. And I just wanted to highlight for the last fiscal year. Um, again, we start with $8,000 on July 1. And so that team actually spent, uh, $3,783.60, but we leveraged, um, just a little underneath $65,000. So that's a pretty huge testament to the collaboration that we have with all of the organizations that are around the table. And, and those that don't come to the table, but they believe and they support our program, Salvation Army, Family Promise, the city of Umsville actually contributes to our neighbor to neighbor fund, which we use to leverage our team dollars. Um, and so that, that is just a huge part of the program. Service integration isn't meant to just take care of a need, but, but to help braid funding and increase that collaboration with our partners. You also have a, um, an annual report for all four teams last year. So those four teams spent $16,459.22 and we leveraged $364,464.05. Again, I think that was a one to 22 ratio. So for every one service integration dollar, we were able to leverage $22. So, um, again, it's just a lot of good hearted caring people around the table that want to see, um, their communities healthy and thriving. Um, I encourage you all to drop into your local Cascade Service Integration Team meeting. Those occur at the Turner Fire Department on the third Thursday of the month. Um, and they're about an hour and a half from 9:00 AM to 10:30 AM. And you will see approximately 35 individuals around that table. It's, it's turned into a very robust team. Um, we get to staff cases, so households that individuals are working with. Um, partners get to share what's going on in their organizations and agencies. Uh, we have staffed the food issue. Um, and we will be talking about that again this month with the, uh, cuts to the SNAP program. And as of November 15th, um, if things don't change, the cuts to the WIC program and what we can do as a community to help support those, those avenues. Um, I also brought some resource guides that the hospital has developed so that, um, City Hall can have those in the, in the lobby to hand out. Um, we really want to be able to take a preventative approach before households end up in the hospital. We want to see them try to connect to those resources and services before it's too late. So that's all I have. Do you guys have any questions?
So are on your team?
She, she's a disaster case manager.
Okay, yeah, she's trying to work with me on a house up in Detroit. Guy didn't have any insurance and.
Yeah.
Getting his house put back together and it's only been five years. So she's working hard on getting it done.
Yeah.
That's cool. I didn't know that was the same place.
Yep, it is the same place.
And I'd just like to make a comment. Um, so obviously the Saniam Integration Team is, is much more connected to, uh, available resources. That's why they're able to leverage so much with just a small, um, contribution. And we've been a partner with, partnered with them for a few years. Um, and we've developed that partnership because we've seen the services they've provided directly to, um, not just Umsville residents, although that's, you know, our objective, but area residents. Cause oftentimes there's people that are just outside of Umsville that we can't help in any way, but Saniam Integration, uh, team does. And we're going to look for, uh, uh, ways to add to our partnership because if you can leverage a dollar, a $22 for every city dollar and run it through an organization that number one knows the resources, but knows how to maximize the return, um, and also to vet, uh, you know, to go through that vetting process that we've kind of talked about. It's, it's, um, I think it's the way for us to be able to help folks in need in the community and truly need in the community and, um, be able to manage that within our current staffing. Uh, that this, they're already doing this work. So we can leverage more, um, with the available resources we have. So I look forward to that. Kim's been a great partner. Her team's been, um, it's just been a great partnership. And, um, hopefully we talk about ways to expand that later.
And I think that's one thing that's, that's most important to me is the relationships that we have. I mean, if, if we hadn't built a relationship, we wouldn't know, you know, that, that I can trust Ron or he can trust me. And there's a lot of trust that goes into that. And I think, um, again, that it all comes back to relationships. You guys know it's who you know and who you work with best and, and having those relationships. And so those partners that are coming to those meetings every month are building those relationships. I get, I get goosebumps right now because the magic time for me is before the meeting and after the meeting when folks linger, right? They're staffing cases, they're checking in on one another. It's just a really magical time, um, that I get to see all these people connecting. So it's really cool.
And the relationship's been two ways because she has resource, uh, service resources, but I have maybe, uh, organizational resources. And so there's been times where we've collaborated both ways, where I've aligned the sit with a contact in some organization that was able to provide more details or better information, real time on the ground for certain situations that we were doing. So it's a great partnership both ways.
Thanks.
And I do get, I'm on the list of emails, one request come to our district that would be affecting our community members. I don't always respond, but I read every single one. I do want you to know that. Um, and I have sent people to you. I do get phone calls sometimes, um, Facebook messages asking if I know of any services, especially for people that are like three or $4, $21 over the limit of state assistance. And I, I do send them to you.
Yeah, yep, and I think we're going to be seeing more of that.
I think we are too, especially with, uh, we were just talking about the, the SNAP.
Yep.
Benefit changes. Uh, I did have a question though. I know you did a great job of, uh, raising money per dollar. Do you guys have like the, what fundraising opportunities? Are there the bigger ones like the galas I've seen other organizations do? Is that?
Wanted a gala. I'm stressed out for something, but no, they, they.
Those big breakfasts we all get invited to down at the convention center.
And really it's word of mouth and I will have random checks come into the hospital. And, um, you know, again, city of Umsville has been a, a great, uh, donor for our neighborhood to neighborhood for, uh, Cascade. Um, but really it's word of mouth and just folks in our community that see social media and see what we do. And, um, we do have some of the faith community that do their, um, type and they donate quarterly or monthly to us. Um, but other than that, we don't have any official fundraising opportunities. Uh, we did develop a, um, a service integration advisory council. And that's one thing they want to talk about next month is how can we generate more funds to be able to stretch these dollars further? So maybe, maybe you'll get a gala.
That'd be nice.
Well, say I've worked with Kim through the clothing closet and the food pantry and it's been a great experience for me as well, working with her. And my partner at the pantry, Dave Kett, works, meets with them as well at their monthly meetings.
And I love those relationships. Again, I know I can call Della for a pair of shoes and Dave, if I need something else and it's great. Thank you.
All right, no further questions? Thank you for coming.
Thank you guys. Have a good night.
Uh, moving on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, we need a second. Sorry, is there a second?
Aye.
Walter, are you seconding?
He's trying.
I will abstain. I was not at the meeting. So we have one abstention, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, consent agenda is approved. There are no public hearings tonight. There is no old business, new business. Moving on to agenda item 6A, Hiberger Park site improvements. We now invite Matt Essel, Etzel to present information.
Good evening.
Matt Essel.
Matt Essel.
So before you, or Matt Etzel, Assistant Public Works Director. Um, before you is a staff report and a recommendation for, um, awarding the site improvements for the Hiberger Park restroom facility. Um, we kind of talked about this a couple of council meetings ago. We had, um, we're going to have multiple, uh, proposals because the work's so different. So Blazer, we, we approved a contract for Blazer to build the restrooms. Uh, we've approved, um, the playground, um, contractor to build and install the playground. And then, um, now before you is a proposal for, um, the sidewalks, the water, the power, the foundation for the restroom facility. And, um, basically everything to make, make that, make that whole. Um, that you will see in, in the staff report, I mentioned that there's a few small items remaining and the city will probably just, um, move forward with, um, soliciting bids in-house for those smaller items. Like we'll have a plumber come and make the final connections. That will be required, probably a crane company to set the, the building. But those contracts will be small enough that we won't need to bring them to council unless you guys would like that. But, um, we're well with, under budget. Um, you'll see in the evaluation, um, a couple, or one of the, the contractors chose not to respond because they were too busy. They'd recently, um, got another job and they wouldn't have time to complete the project by the end of the year. Um, there was another, um, bidder that I don't think quite understood the scope of work and they might've just put a bid in hoping that, that they would, they would possibly get it. But they, um, they proposed a slab and I sent them a foundation detail. So I was a little bit uncomfortable awarding that, um, awarding that, that proposal. So our recommendation would be the Canyon Contracting, um, their bid was a little bit below. Emery and Sons, um, they just recently did the same bathroom facility in Sublimity. And what I'm told things went smooth and, and so, um, yeah, happy to answer any questions if you guys have any questions about the proposals or.
Looks good.
And Canyon did one in Sublimity?
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
And they've done a lot of work with us, right?
Yes, they've done a lot of work. They just, um, completed the Figaro's street improvements project for the city, so.
I'm always shocked contracting for 20 years myself and I look at numbers when it's to municipalities and states and they're high.
Yeah.
They're high, $21 a foot for concrete. Would you pay that anybody at your house? No, so I just, I'm always.
Yeah.
I get irritated.
And, and part of it is too, because of the, the, the total overall cost of the project and we split it up, it is prevailing wage. Even though their, their bid is under 50,000, we have to pay prevailing benefits. And there's quite a bit of paperwork and stuff that's involved that, you know, they, they keep track of all that stuff and they add, they add it into the, the prices.
Aye. I mean, Emery was even higher.
Yeah.
By 10 grand.
And actually I was surprised at how competitive all the quotes really were, how close they were. Cause sometimes you'll see, you know, maybe a 30 and then like a 70. And so you're, you kind of wonder how they came up with the numbers, but.
Double laminate. Yeah, thanks.
Yeah.
Are they, well, are there any questions or comments? Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve the Canyon Contracting LLC proposal in the amount of $39,575,000 from Fund 015-811. Site improvements as presented by staff.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to agenda item 6B, ODOT Electric Vehicle Grant. We will now, Matt will continue his presentation.
Yeah, so before you is, uh, a quote or a purchase agreement for two, um, F-154 Lightning pickups. These will be purchased under a carbon reduction grant through ODOT. Um, again, under budget, um, when we applied for this grant, um, I think we based the numbers off of MSRP and going under state in for two and going under state, um, the state contract for the vehicles. It was substantially lower. Um, the equipment costs for the lights and the toolbox and stuff kind of went up a little bit with tariffs and different things, but we're still well under budget for this project. Um, Northside Ford also got us into, um, communication with Ford, the Ford dealership, and able to provide chargers for free for these two vehicles. So, um, yeah, we're have probably not much more over what, what you see here for the contract, um, price for these vehicles. And to, to finalize this grant, we did receive email communication that we are authorized to make the purchase and request reimbursement. Um, we've asked a couple more times, like, are we sure? Everything's good. I know council had some concerns about the new administration and, you know, federal funding and, and the shutdown and that sort of thing. And we've been told that the money has already been sent to ODOT. The money is there, it's ready for reimbursement. So, um, a little bit of reassurance. I communicated this with Northside Ford and they said, if something happens, we can sell these trucks, don't worry about it. But I want, we wanted to get this in front of council so that we could agree, get an approval on the contracts, get the vehicles here. And then if for some reason there's an issue with reimbursement or whatever, we're still probably okay to just leave the trucks with, or Northside Ford and they would, they would sell them on their own, so.
I, I just, I don't see them canceling an executed contract. I know everybody's worried because that they're, they threaten to do that. These types of contracts, I just don't see that a concern.
Yeah.
Um, that, that just be, having said that, you can see why we don't really chase down federal dollars a lot. Because we've been, uh, a year and a half now, um, going through the steps for these federal dollars. And albeit it's a great return, you know, for the city, a couple hundred thousand dollar grant. We're, we're going to be well under budget of that. So, um, but it is a lot of work. Um, uh.
Yeah, I think we've sent them the quotes, you know, two or three different times requesting approval. And we get, you know, blanket emails coming back that say, go ahead and, and purchase, you know, and nothing to do with the quote that we sent them, but just it's authorized, go ahead and take care of it. So they did do an environmental report. That was part of the federal funding that was all approved and done in-house at ODOT. So we assume that everything is going as planned and we're moving forward with, with what's required. We kind of told ODOT, this is, this would be the process that we take. We'd bring the contracts to city council for the grant and then the contracts for the equipment. And then the equipment would come and we'd request reimbursement, so, um, yeah.
This is our final stage.
Yeah, this is the final stage here, so.
To take them to reimburse, you just don't know then, huh?
It's in the contract and I believe it's 30 or 45 days or something like that, so, um.
Once they've executed the contract, it's really, even if the federal government, our, our contract is with ODOT.
Right, yeah.
So if something happened with the funds, really that would be for ODOT to figure out. They, they would have to honor the.
Yeah, and they've told us that those funds are there.
They said they have the funds already.
Yeah, so we're not worried about that.
Yeah. And then we can request for reimbursement when we get an invoice from Northside Ford before we even like receive the vehicle. So we can kind of get a little bit of heads up on submitting for reimbursement before we're running the trucks around town.
Right.
Yeah.
All right, um, anyone have any questions? Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve the Northside Ford proposal of two F-154 Lightning EV pickups in the amount of $130,967 from the Fund 020810, Public Works Vehicle Replacement as presented by staff. Second.
Did we get, which one was it? Walter, okay, so we have a second. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion, but Della, did you vote? I didn't hear, okay, motion passes unanimously.
Then again, Matt.
They call it pickup. I know, I know. Get me a pickup.
Not a pickup?
Pickups, I guess.
I call it.
It's not a privilege tax on them.
Moving on to agenda item, uh, 6C, City Administrator Performance Evaluation. Counselor Cox will provide information, or Council President Cox will provide information.
So I just want to say it's done. It's probably just, um, not enough. Um, I think that was.
It is enough, but we need to add some to that.
I, I guess what I want to say is I think more than just working on the evaluation, we did a lot of work on the process as well and smoothing the process out. Um, in trying to make sure that it works smoother and hopefully quicker next year. Um, we did make some changes. So we, we collected the input, um, put it together, um, and then modified a little bit. One of the changes was, was, was on the form itself because it wasn't really, really, I guess, put together right to, to collect what we needed. What the form did is it collected a lot of people's opinions, um, which, which is not really what we wanted, a bunch of opinions. We want, we want direction, a consistent direction, um, in the evaluation. So overall, though, it came out very well. I mean, all of the feedback was that Ron does an amazing job. Um, that was envious across the board, including staff that, that we interviewed. Um, we did, one modification form is that we did take out the goals section. We ended up removing that because the goals for the city are actually already in this, right? So as we're doing our, um, our meetings, our, what do we, what do we call?
Workshops.
What?
Workshops.
Retreats and workshops?
Thank you, yes. So as we're doing the retreats and the workshops, we're also talking about the city objectives and the goals. So next, when we're doing that, if we have goals or directions for the city, we need to make those goals and talk about those goals at that time, right? And then once we are to the evaluation point, then we can, um, summarize any goals that are not met or, you know, and we can talk about it and move forward from there. But most of the time, I think, I think the, the evaluation is really an opportunity to really celebrate the city achievement. Yes, um, so I think that's what we did. Um, it took so long, but I think it's done now. We do want to try to get, set some training up, um, so that we all can have a training session and talk about it. And then we want to work on more of a standard procedure. So I think that's, that's yet to come, so. Um, I do think that everyone, I mean, we did talk about merit increase. Um, Ron has declined the merit increase, so we won't do that. But we do need to individually look over his employment contract and then we have to have some discussion at some point about pay and the pay structure and the, and. Questions, did I leave anything out, Ron or Angie? We all kind of worked on it together.
I do want to add that normally this should be done by March. Um, the form itself and the process has, has been a process over the last, I, I don't know, since I was council president. It is, um, and I did ask, uh, Ron and, uh, Council President Cox to attend the training that the LOC provided so that we can better prepare the council as a whole to adequately and professionally do a performance, a performance appraisal at this level of profession. And we are all, we are just normal people, right? We don't work in HR. I work a lot with HR, which is totally different. Um, so that, and they did attend and I, I don't know what the review on that workshop was, but. So that, and they did attend and I, I don't know what the review on that workshop was, but I asked them to attend and they did attend. So we do want to have a training for the rest of council so that we can be better prepared. So that we know what we're asking of our, our city staff that leads the rest of the city staff. Right? So that it's not like, I don't like his tie, right? Like things like that. And thank you for, for putting so much work and time. It has been a collective effort. I do want to say.
The workshop actually was very helpful. I mean, I think, and I mean, I think it could have been more specific on some. But it did spur a lot of discussion and so that kind of took, that session kind of took off and whole new conversation with Ron while we were in there. I think we were trainer was, was discussing. I think it's helpful.
One question I do want to ask Ron, and this is about the timing of it. When we do the state of the city, would it be better to move the eval? Because right now it's supposed to be done between January and March. Would it be better to move that evaluation process to after the presentation of the state of the city? Because that's where we see where those goals and benchmarks are being met.
Yeah, I, I think the contract date, the evaluation date that was put in the contract was just a form. It was just a state like, the city had used a form contract. And that was the date that was memorialized in there. So it makes sense to have the evaluation done prior to March first. So maybe to begin after the state of the city. And since Doug brought that up about the, the merit increase, I would like council to consider the merit increase. As we went through the evaluation process, it was, it was you know, there were, it was a roller coaster ride because I wanted to, it, I wanted to introduce a formal process to a process that was traditionally informal. And so we had to do a lot of back and forth. And I think my comment to Doug was you're supposed to, you're supposed to celebrate the the accomplishments and the achievements and that celebration or reward for that is a merit increase. That's part of the contract language. But my conversation to him was I felt like the, the process kind of had taken the, the air out of that celebration. So really the merit increase did not have the same impact that it would. Part of that is just, we kind of went through this backwards process. So the, the, the good, the good part of it is, is I think where we have landed is really, really close to a very formal process. And Doug and I discussed having CIS come in and do some training because you know, part of what we do when we do a staff evaluations, we do the programs to increase morale. We celebrate their successes, even the small successes. And, and we do that because that increases productivity. And if I had a merit program for my staff, I would certainly be using that. I use other incentives. But for me as a contract employee, that, that is the incentive. And so I did tell Doug that it really didn't have a benefit to the city. So there really wasn't a point in it, but if you considered that tonight, I, I would accept it.
You would accept the merit increase that was approved previously?
Okay, that's good. I mean, I guess not only do we, I mean, this is Ron's evaluation, but we're really also just celebrating and recognizing the accomplishments of the entire city because we're asking Ron to do is doing. Oh, I haven't. If anybody has any other questions?
It says, I don't think we need a motion with this because we've already approved your merit increase, which is just to let us know.
Yeah, and this is just to finalize the evaluation and.
All right. And then even though it took forever to figure out a better process, this process is going to start again in January.
Yeah, right around the corner.
Yeah, just. So I don't know when we have, as, as soon as we can get that training out for council, that would be great.
Yeah, I was going to touch that in my report, but since you brought it up, I'll bring it up. Sharon Harris from CIS is going to come and do a training. It's going to be a general training about risk, but we'll talk a little bit more about evaluating. And, and really, we were hoping when we went to the League of Oregon Cities Conference that they would get into the mechanics of evaluating and they kept it more theoretical, but but really the idea, even when I'm evaluating a staff member, we're, we're aligning very measurable performance metrics to their, to their evaluations. And that's where I'd really like to see council go, go. And that is the way that you would traditionally do a professional evaluation. It's less about, you know, you hear all these things about three sixty and you do this and you do that. It's really just about what did you ask me to do and what did I, what did I actually do? You know, those, tho- those are really what a performance evaluation, a measurable evaluation criteria is. Now, as Doug indicated, you know, if we were to have a retreat and council had a specific objective, we would want to just make sure that we wrote that so that I knew what council's expectations were for delivering and that you knew what you were asking me to do. So when I deliver it, everybody knows it was delivered. And that's really the basis for it. And so those are the things that we want to make sure that we do. I, I've not, I don't have a date because CIS isn't scheduled out through after the first of the year. But as soon as I get a date, we'll, we'll let that, we'll, we'll let council know what those dates are. And again, it'll be, it'll, it'll have a lot there. It'll be great training for the council. And so that'll happen. And then I would just say, mayor to your question, as soon as we get that date for that, sometime after that, we could go ahead and put the evaluate. We'll have what I think is going to be in this training built into our SOP. And we're going to change the form. I think, I've got some ideas on how to change the form so it's much easier for council. And it will be literally, here's the objective given by council in this section. And then it'll be, you know, performance, yes, performance, no type thing. So I, I think that'll go much easier. And then I also went ahead and I put in some procedural changes into the SOP. We'll, I don't want to distribute it now because we may make some changes to it as Doug and I work on it. Stand, standard operating procedure. So things to communicate the council, like how do you receive the form? What do you do once you receive the form? That type of stuff. How do you communicate that to whoever's the evaluator? So we just want to make it, spell it out really clean. So there's no guessing. And I think we've got a great process. I think it was, it was rocky. It was rocky, but we got there. Doug and I got there and, and Angie helped out. And I, I think we, at the end of the day, developed a good process moving forward. So. I think it's just so much smoother if we understand. I mean, we all have ideas, right? And they're all good ideas, but really our ideas need to be moved forward as a group, not rather just individual ideas. By, you know, setting some objectives and forward those.
Doug, thank you for all the time. I know you reached out a few times for clarification and direction. This was a very detailed process and I, I want to say thank you to the both of you for working together as much as possible and putting up with my shortness when I got tired. So, thank you. If there isn't anything else, we can move on to agenda item seven, which is the City Administrator Report. Ron?
Excellent. Well, we covered that. That was the bulk of my report. So the rest of it should go pretty easy. So just a couple of quick things. Christmas in the park, our theme this year is Believe from the Polar Express movie. So we're putting together a whole collaborative theme around that. I think you guys, I think it's going to be great. It's funny, somebody made the comment on our website about five years ago that they moved to the city and they felt like they were immersed in a Hallmark movie. I can't tell you fifteen people in the last month have made that same comment to me. And sometimes it's centered around community events and sometimes it's just centered around the fact that people will help. But I, I have to tell you what that tells me is a lot of stuff that we're doing is achieving what we wanted to achieve and especially with a lot of new people that have moved into the community because they've come from somewhere else and experienced that. And now they're comparing that here. And so I think that's great. And I, I bring that up only because I, I was speaking to somebody in my office on, on Thursday and he basically was saying, they moved here and their first event was Christmas in the park and they felt like they were in the middle of a Hallmark movie. And, and so that, that, that's been said quite a bit. Our fuel stations down at Public Works are done. They look great. Very nice, modern. They have a card reader system or code reader system in it so we can track fuel usage for vehicles and there's video surveillance there. So you know, people can't, we can see if somebody's coming in. So there's, it's, it's really secured our fuel. Our fuel outlet up plus obviously it allows for if we have an event that we have fuel to be able to respond to that event. So it really hits a lot of the things we're trying to do from public safety to just good stewards of the city resources. And we're waiting for final inspection before we can actually get that in use with our fleet from the fire marshal and they're a little bit behind, but as soon as we get that done. Yeah, hopefully. Soon as we get that done.
But it looks good.
It doesn't.
I don't know if it works yet, but it looks.
Well, we, I think. We've tested it. And the next time we get to do a tour, we'll certainly put some of these new facilities in our, our full council tour, but it'll be on the state of the city. Hamburger Park is coming along. Everything's as scheduled. You approved kind of one of the final major pieces tonight. Playground equipments ordered. We've been working on some final details for all of that equipment. You know, we're not talking about a huge, like giant playground set like we have down at Porter Boone. It's very small and condensed. But for that neighborhood area out there to have something like that where people can walk to, it's going to be really, it's going to be really nice for those families. And I know a lot of families with small children. It is geared towards small children. So that are, that are in that area. So that's going to be great. We're also adding a smaller toddler playground to Wildwood. So it's a, you know, the small size. So if the kids fall off, it's, they're not high off the ground. So we're working on that. Meetings for the holidays, we typically cancel the Monday before Christmas and the Monday before Thanksgiving. Okay, so I was just going to say, so we typically cancel that. I don't think that's going to be a need this year. Like we had to have a special meeting last year, but I just want to counsel to know if something comes up, we either may try to implement one of those back into the rotation or have a special meeting. Thank you. And I think, I think that's it on my report. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Only is the countdown to the tree lighting actually going to work this year?
A Hallmark movie, it better work. I gotta have the tree lighting.
It's like an ongoing joke now.
We've discussed it and we think we figured out the glitches.
And well, you, you realize that most of the time.
Years in a row now that it's not worked.
Most of the time, that's part of the plan. Last year wasn't part of the plan, but it is typically part of the plan. It's part of the skit. About half the time.
We're just like, oh, I meant to do, I loosened that jar before you opened it, like.
Yeah, yeah. So sometimes it's part of the skit, but it is, it is fun.
Part of the problem we discovered is that it works fine when you're on the stage and there's no people there. When you get all the people there, it doesn't get the signal through. So we have to have someone standing by the tree.
And that person has to be trustworthy.
And it's not going to be.
Some people, some people are not really good at pressing a button. We won't name names.
All right, moving on. Is there anything for good of the order? Does anyone have anything they would like to report?
I don't know if this is good of the order, but did we lose a police officer or somebody quit?
There's no. We have one vacancy.
Okay.
Yeah.
Was that somebody left? Somebody quit? Okay.
Yeah.
I had a couple of people ask me and it took me a while to find it online because I guess I don't follow Omsville Police Department's page. The chief had put a, a thing out there, so.
Yeah, when we have.
Why? I said, I don't know. I thought we were full staffed as of a few weeks ago, I thought, or a month ago, but something happened.
Yeah, okay.
Not sure this is good of the order or just reporting, but I just wanted to say how fun the pumpkin patch in the Holiday Bazaar was. If, and I don't think I saw any of you there. There were a lot of pumpkins and it was a good show for the vendors that came out. And I want to thank staff for all your hard work and getting all those pumpkins placed out there. And it was a good time and fun.
Nice weather day.
No donuts left, so I have to buy more donuts next.
I had.
It was a nice day.
I had intended to go, but my nephew had a baby shower. And that was the first day I actually got to sleep in, in probably weeks. So I woke up late and ran to the baby shower. I did not attend. I'm really glad. I did reach out to find out how it went. So good of the order is usually like things that counselors want to bring forward to the agenda. If you didn't get a chance to get it on in the first night. And it also like is mayor and counselor reports as well. I think we used to have a separate section and this one's all combined into one. Anything that you guys need to report on, like that you attended and you participated in that, things like that. So it is the right.
I'll probably never remember which is which, but.
And I'll just add, if it's okay with council, to the, the, the pumpkin patch and the event. There's a correspondence that you were handed tonight from somebody. Talking about what a wonderful event and some of the kind of history of their participation in the event. I thought that was, that was very nice. That they did that. It, it was a good event. I think what we find out with this, this summer market because unless you're a very, very large urban summer market, a lot of the local farmers have converted through COVID to these roadside stands. They don't have to staff them. They just put a video camera and it's kind of the honor system. And I think they just feel like it all works out better that way. They don't have to haul stuff. They don't have to set it up. So markets are changing over, over time and we find that our market, our markets that perform well are the ones that we do something else with. Like the pumpkin patch or the Super Hall Carnival. So that'll be a discussion when we get into our retreat to talk about what does that future of that market look like? And it really, it really takes somebody to just concentrating on that to make it successful. And so we'll have to talk about that a little bit, but it was great. We did a lot of pictures with families. They were very happy. We had photo stations set up. There'll be some in the newsletter. If you haven't already received it, you'll get it in, in a couple of days. And you'll see some of those pictures. We did lots of pictures with the, the families and the kids. And you know, you've got a thirty pound toddler trying to pick up a fifteen pound pumpkin. It's, it's fun to watch. So.
I guess I should also say too, a thank you to Colleen Rogers for carrying us through the summer with the Saturday market. Just so she had.
LOC conference was not reported on, at least in the minutes that I read. We did, we had three of us that attended the LOC conference at the first weekend in October. It was their hundred year conference. I went to a very interesting AI presentation that had me very, very feisty at the first half of it and then more for educational purpose, the second half. And the keynote speaker I thought did very belly, very well about communicating with different generations. I got a lot out of it. I don't know about the others, but that was good. I do want to share that as part of being a mayor, I'm part of the Oregon Mayors Association and I have accepted a position on their board as a director, which also gets me a little more involved with the League of Oregon Cities representing Omsville and other rural communities across the state of Oregon. So I'm not sure everything that will come out of that, but it is to run through the end of next year. Um, and then we talked about correspondence. Does anyone have, have anything else?
This one commented as well about the conference. And it was the first session. I mean, I found it very, very helpful. The lady talked just about. Just about, you know, making sure that our meetings are civil and kind. It just, it just goes a long ways to really see a council that is just really kind to each other and, you know, focused on the issues. And, you know, not taking things personal and. Go off the rails and, and really stay in um, so. It was a good, it was a good workshop. If I. Can you only get that online? Can you only go back and see those if you were ready? Because it would be good for everybody to go back and look at that if it's available. I don't know. It was actually a really, really good, a really good workshop. So I don't know if it's.
We'll, we'll see.
Be really something good for, for everybody to see.
There was a workshop that I attended on legacy leadership and um, I'll see if it's available. If it is, we'll link it and send it out to council. It, it is worth. I think the presenter did a great job of talking about his experience as a city manager. And um, and just some of the situations. I think a lot of those are identifiable to us. And um, and he really put it in a great context. So. Um, yes, we'll see. If we can find those, we'll, we'll link them and send them out in an email to council.
Della, you had something?
I just wanted to let you guys know that with the SNAP benefits being cut. We had a hundred and nineteen people last Thursday at the food pantry. And interest and need is only growing. So we are going to be adding. More barrels around town. Um, we've got some businesses that have agreed to add them now. And we're sending letters to all the businesses asking if we can get corporate support that we've not been getting in the past. And asking the community for more help as well. Uh, we're also going to a meeting with Marion Pope Food Chair where we're going to be discussing. What's going on at the state level and obtaining funds. We did find out that. Willamette Valley Pie Company donated two hundred and twenty-five cases of pies. To the food bank that will be distributed across Oregon for the holidays. Which has never happened before, so it's really exciting. Upgrade there. But just know that we're doing everything we can to try to reach food for our community.
I did read an article today that there is a possibility of SNAP benefits running dry by Saturday with the federal shutdown, so.
They. The information we got is that no benefits will be distributed in November.
Is this different than Oregon Trail EBT?
No, it is Oregon.
So it is the same.
It's called SNAP, yeah.
Called SNAP. So SNAP funds Oregon Trail.
supplemental nutrition. Program.
Separation between the two. So it's anybody that saw on Oregon Trail is in that.
States just call it different things, but it's federal.
Okay.
Yeah, it's federal.
The federal program is called SNAP and then each state has its own.
Okay.
Program run.
There are what, seven hundred and seventy-five thousand people?
Yeah, so we've already had twenty-eight percent cuts. In federal funding for food assistance and now SNAP is going down because of the shutdown.
I think it's important to remember as council, as we. Go our, our daily lives and people talk to us. When things like this happen, you know, this is, again, you have to think about things that are most important to our life, which is. Self-preservation and protection and not being fearful, right? So one of the things when. People can't buy food or they can't afford to buy food and there's. Cuts to federal programs that affect our communities, they're, the first thing to do is to lash out at government. And those involved, right? Um, and the conversations for that is like, we are aware of it. Um, the mayor and other leaders are in communication with state and federal leaders. And the. And try to send them to sit, reach out to Della or she has a list of.
I have all kinds of resources that have poured into my inbox to print out for people if they need help. So if they come to the food pantry, I have a whole board full of. Pits of information where they can reach, get help.
Um, correspondence. I read the email. Hope you guys read the printed out email. Um, at this time, uh, we can adjourn the regular meeting. We do have. An executive meeting, so if we're ready, I can formally adjourn the. Oh, well. Is there a statement on here? As we will have an executive meeting. Um, immediate following tonight's regular meeting for the correspond, uh, consideration of exempt information. Pursuit to ORRS one nine two point six six zero two F. The regular meeting is now adjourned at seven fifty-six PM.